Um, think about it. We'll touch base maybe tomorrow and see if you want me to pick you up. I'll pick you up.
Yeah, pick you up. I don't care.
Okay.
Well, I know you sometimes you like stuck to your normal or something on your way back.
Ten four.
No problem.
It's all now.
I lost my pen. Amy, can you get me a pen? Thank you.
I always have two.
Oh, Jason's got one for me. I swore I put one in my pocket. Does she have that easy for me now?
Uh, she should.
What?
Flecker?
It's settled down.
You should have it.
Okay.
Oh, it's right here.
There you go. We're ready.
Call the Oglesby council meeting to order.
Auger Bright and Cullen are absent. Curran?
Here.
Udis?
Here.
Revara?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments on agenda items only. I need a motion and second to approve the minutes of the February sixth twenty twenty-third regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the February sixth twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
Second.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
I need a motion and second to approve the bills in the amount of four hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve bills in the amount of four hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents as presented for payment.
Second.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Introduction of Oglesby newest police officer, Paul Peterson, and oath of office.
So Paul comes to us as a lateral transfer from Endota Police Department where he served for six and a half years. Um, he was a patrolman as well as an investigator there. We're very excited to have him here on Oglesby. And, uh, you want to come up, Paul, and I'll do the swearing in? And after that, we'll have the person of your choice do the badge pinning for you. I, Paul Peterson.
I, Paul Peterson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And enforce the state laws and the city ordinances impartially.
Enforce state laws and city ordinances impartially.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Patrolman.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of Officer Patrolman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you. You're welcome aboard.
Okay. Next on my agenda is to approve the proclamation of the one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of the INM Canal.
I'll make a motion. We approve the proclamation of the one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of the INM Canal.
Second.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Next, approve recommendations from the Oglesby Planning Commission for various tax amendments and amendment to zoning map made by Patrick Watson.
Ma'am, you want me to take this, Jason, for a little bit?
Sure, I'll have a comment after at the end.
Okay. Um, I prepared a little cheat sheet because we discussed a lot at that meeting. Uh, Dom and Jason were both there, as was Jim. And I just thought the rest of them. So the first item we took up was the request from Patrick Watson to change the zoning on the parcel of land he owns just west of Route two fifty-one. It's currently in a community retail service district, and he's requesting that it be changed to an R-two, single-family residential district because he wants to build a home there. Um, discussions were had about, um, the utility connections. Some discussions have been had since the meeting about utility connections too. Um, Jim suggested that they were just to the north in the subdivision there, so they wouldn't be a big deal to extend them down. Mr. Watson, since the meeting, understands that that would be at his expense, so it's only being extended to one piece of property at his request. Uh, but the recommendation of the Plan Commission was that, uh, it be changed from B-two Community Retail Service District to R-two Single Family Residential District so as to allow for the construction of his home there. And the next item on your agenda is actually an ordinance to formalize that change. I felt confident in preparing that ordinance for presentation to you tonight. Uh, as I, I didn't think there'd be any objection to it. There didn't seem to be at the Plan Commission at all. But it's up to you guys now to formalize that. Any questions about Mr. Watson?
No.
Terry?
I don't have any.
Jason was there, so he knows pretty much about it. Then we moved on to a variety of other issues, which, uh, I think Jason and Jim had been suggesting to maybe improve your building code in a number of respects. Um, the first several of them related to fencing issues, and Jim had come up with some fairly comprehensive language about changing the definition of the front and corner side yard in section fourteen point oh six point one two zero C of the building code to read front and corner side yard setback area within rear yard setback area within the rear, when the rear yards about an alley. And then add the following language to the table thereafter. Corner side yards outside these limits may be treated as a side yard. The intersection visibility requirements of fourteen dash six dash fourteen shall also apply. Fences along corner side yards shall also be placed so as not to obscure the sightlines of drivers exiting driveways and/or garages. Particular attention shall be given to this requirement when sidewalks are present. I think many issues over the last few years have arisen regarding the construction of fencing, particularly on corner lots, and these suggestions are, um, meant to try and correct some of that for future applications. Uh, Jason or Jim may have more comments about that.
I do. All my comments, I'll do all my comments at the end because it all relates to the board and the good job they did.
Okay. Um, the, the next suggestion was that we change, uh, the requirement that sidewalks be required on side streets ending in cul-de-sacs uh, as required by section fourteen point oh nine point one zero, capital A of the city's building code, uh, when the street portion is only the depth of one lot. So if the cul-de-sac street is two or three or four lots deep, there was not a suggestion that the sidewalk requirement be changed. But when it was only one lot deep and then a cul-de-sac, the suggestion was made that maybe we omit the, the requirement for construction of sidewalks on those short blocks. I think the thinking was that there would not be a lot of sidewalk traffic there, uh, and that it would not be dangerous to have people walking in the streets as opposed to requiring the sidewalks there. Um, the Plan Commission did not agree with that suggestion, and they, uh, pretty much vehemently recommended that not be approved. They think sidewalks should be required on every street in the city of Oglesby. Um, so that decision now falls on the council. With regard to building permits, um, there were lots of discussions about that. Um, and really on tweaking the building permit applications to require, um, the, the placement of sidewalks and fencing on those applications, so it would be known early on in the process where there's, where those were going to be located, and also require the physical marking of the location of those uh, so that they could be viewed by the building inspector both before the project starts up through the construction. So they, they want those lines maintained for the purposes of the building inspection. Uh, there was also a suggestion made to actually tighten up the language in the building code defining a structure to specifically include sidewalks and fencing. I think right now it includes fencing, but does not include sidewalks, and they wanted to make that clear that if you, uh, were going to either construct a building or sidewalks or fencing, that you had to apply for a building code and you had to mark it out so it was clearly visible. And, uh, decisions could be made about the proper placement of those before it started. Finally, we took up an issue about letters of occupancy. So right now you do have a code provision that requires your building inspectors, electrical inspectors, plumbing inspectors to go out and look at particularly new construction to require that, um, everything is done correctly before a letter of occupancy could be issued to occupy that property once the construction was completed. But sometimes there are issues where the property can't be completed, such as the construction of a new home in the middle of winter when sidewalks wet can't be built, front yards can't be graded due to weather issues. So, um, there was a suggestion made that in the event something like that were to occur, then the landowner could, um, escrow one and a half times the estimated cost of the completed construction, the stuff that still needed to be done, with the city clerk so that, uh, to ensure its compliance by, uh, June first of the following year. The theory there is that if the construction wasn't complete by June first of the following year, and, um, there was no legitimate reason why it couldn't be done, the city could go ahead and complete those matters and use the money in the escrow to pay for them so that things are properly finished the way they should be. It's been a small problem in the past that would be corrected by this change. Jason?
That was a great summary. Thank you so much. Now, as you can imagine, um, so at that meeting, I just wanted to highlight and say, uh, thank you to all the, uh, the members of the Plan Commission, uh, just kind of highlights the importance of some of the committees and commissions we have that work so hard. I think all that stuff that was just summarized took place over like an hour and a half of vigorous discussion. So I really appreciate, um, the, the detailed look at stuff, the good questions, and, and a way to solve some of these problems going forward.
So I guess I'm just looking for any feelings about whether you think any of these recommendations are wrong or right. If you think they're correct, I will start to draft, um, an ordinance or ordinances to formalize these changes at one of your upcoming meetings.
So for example, I was actually hoping that they would go with the recommendation of the sidewalks. Uh, but I was on the fence about that anyways. Um, the ones with the cul-de-sacs, because the goal is to try to clear up some of the language to not have so many houses in violation and, and solve that. But I'm going to go with what their recommendation is. They, they talked about it, uh, in high detail, so I thought that was a good, you know, to me, for us as a council to go against what our committees or commissions would recommend, I think it would have to be very, very important for us to, to want to go against it. And with their great discussion, I don't, I don't think there's enough there to go against it, so I would go with all their recommendations.
Okay. Terry, any questions since you weren't there? Okay. And Dom, I think you were comfortable that night as well. Okay, I think I have my marching orders. I'll get to work on those ordinances and you'll see them on your upcoming agenda.
Can you also add the, uh, remember the two items that don't have to be done via the, the Plan Commission?
They'll be part of it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
So number ten is ready, Dom, tonight.
Okay. Uh, approve one-two-one-one dash zero-two-two-one-two-three, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the city zoning map uh, relating to a part of the northwest quarter of section thirty-four, Township Thirty-three, North Ridge, one, east of the third parcel of Meridian, as described herein, located in the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance one-two-one-one dash zero-two-two-one-two-three. Is that good enough?
That's good enough.
I think so.
I'll second.
This, this is Mr. Watson's change, okay?
Yep.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye. Next is approve raffle license requested by the Oglesby Elks Lodge, number twenty-three sixty.
Make a motion. We approve the raffle license request from the Oglesby Elks Lodge twenty-three sixty.
Second.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye. Twelve, approve the purchase of the fire station exhaust system from the Hastings Air Energy Control Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars.
Any questions on this, guys?
No, I just, I wish I had the opportunity, when I was down there last week with the, the outage and everything with the warming center, I should have taken an opportunity to look at those bunk rooms to see that soot that you were talking about, but I, I didn't do that. It's, it's too bad that we didn't take care of this much, much earlier, so.
Yeah, I think it's an important project.
It's, it's very important.
I'll make a motion. We approve the purchase of the fire station exhaust extraction system from Hastings Air Energy Control in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars.
Second.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye. Uh, review a recommendation and approve a bid to submit, uh, submitted from the Virginia Transformer in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars for a transformer at the Malik Substation.
I know Tommy's not here tonight, but when we placed this on file at the last meeting, one of the concerns he had was the reason we're selecting this is part, partially in due because of it's a sixty-week turnaround time. He was concerned how accurate that was. So I was able to secure two letters. The first letter was from Virginia Transformer in the first place, and they said their expected timeframe is fifty-six to sixty weeks in a statement. Of course, that is the business themselves. So I went further ahead and I got BHMG to ask them, you know, how many times they've dealt with them, and they send us a letter that's in the packets as well. Um, they have done ten, uh, sorry, eight substation upgrades with this transformer company in the last eight years, and every single one of them has been made on time. They did want to put a caveat in that explanation, though, that all of those station upgrades were prior to COVID, though, so. But every indication I have is that they are looking to be on time. So unless there's any other questions about that, I would like to approve it. Any questions?
I'll make a question.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid submitted from Virginia Transformer in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars for a transformer at the Malik Substation.
Second.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye. I just have one comment. We've already just approved it. Uh, we need to get this going. To delay it would delay our backup and our second fee.
And it took us about two years to get approved for the second fee in the first place, so we're already scratching a year behind on what we expected to be able to get that answer.
Okay, next is approve BLR zero-nine-one-one-zero, a resolution for improvement of Clark Street and Hickory Avenue Culvert Replacement.
So what this is, and I, I think I've mentioned it in the past, but we talk about every year that we do our, our, a street maintenance program for different streets that we put there, and, and I've been talking to a lot of residents. Um, you know, because everybody always wants to get their street, their, their alley, their s- something, something fixed. And the problem is you always have to go with the highest priority. So for example, I think I've mentioned this before, the culverts on Clark Street and Hickory Avenue. Hickory Avenue's been patched numerous times, even over just the last four years that we've been in here. Uh, and it keeps sinking. When we had that massive rainstorm, they've all but almost washed them out. And our engineer took a look at that and pretty much said if we have another massive rainstorm, both those culverts could wash out completely. And if that were to occur, anybody that lives on Hickory, Arbor, Hillside, or the far west end of Clark would not be able to get to their homes. So the, the problem is, even though I have a maintenance list of all the streets and alleys that we want to get done, when things like this pop up, they become the new highest priority. So the other thing that's unfortunate about it is we were hoping it was only going to be a little over a hundred thousand. Uh, but because of backfill costs and, and, and the excavation detail that has to be in, it's looking at two hundred and fifty-four thousand right now is the estimate of what we're having. And I got about two hundred and seventy thousand that I can spend this year in motorfield tax. So hopefully by getting, going out for the, the, getting the resolution approved and going out for bid, we'll get lots of bid options and maybe we get one that's significantly lower, and that'll give us a little bit more, uh, options to get more streets and alleys done this year. But to me, to me, it's a kind of a no-brainer. There's, there's not an option. I, we, we can't not do those culverts because then people simply at some point in time will not be able to get to their homes.
We don't have a choice.
Yep. So any other questions on that at all? All right, I'll make a motion to approve BL, or no, sorry, to approve or place on file. I think it was approved because we're not actually spending the money tonight. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve BLR zero-nine-one-one-zero, a resolution for improvement for Clark Street and Hickory Avenue Culvert Replacement.
Second.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye. Approve BLR zero-five-five-three-o, a local public agency engineering service agreement for the Clark Street and Hickory, uh, Avenue Culvert Replacement.
My understanding that this is just another, because we're using motorfield tax funds, it's another requirement that we have to approve to go along with it.
You're right.
I'll make a motion to approve BLR zero-five-five-three-zero, a local public agency engineering services agreement for Clark Street and Hickory Avenue Culvert Replacements.
Second.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye. Old Business, uh, Old Business is the, uh, parking lot bid. Uh, we opened bids this morning. Advanced Asphalt Company, the concrete bid was a hundred and nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Asphalt was seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred. Uh, the, uh, from Opener Men Construction, uh, they only submitted a concrete bid that was for a hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. And the, uh, uh, Universal Asphalt and Escalading, uh, their concrete bid was eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seven.
Seventy.
Eight hundred and seventies dollars? Right there, I think so. And asphalt was fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, we do have to, um, get an agreement with the, uh, gentleman that lives behind there to do anything. Uh, and before I go on, I was asked today that, um, we consider another alternative for a parking lot downtown. Uh, that was to tear down Dollar General and build a parking lot there. We don't own Dollar General. But, uh, I said I would, I would bring it up. Uh, if there's more discussion on it, uh, fine. But I just want to let you know what the, uh, what the bids are. Can we actually do anything with these tonight, or do we have to?
Place them on file.
You, you need to place them on file, Dom, before you can approve to spend that money.
Okay. So I need a motion to place bids on file.
Before we do that.
Yep.
They came down quite a bit, I believe, on this figure, going out for the second bids here on the asphalt. Were it seventy-four thousand?
Yeah, I don't have.
Before?
I don't have the full bid package in front of me to what they were.
Seventy, so that's a substantial savings from the initial low bid that we received for the asphalt.
The lowest bid before was seventy-four thousand, five sixty-five. I don't know if, how many there were for it, but we did.
That was the lowest bid.
That was the lowest bid out of everything. So now the lowest is just under sixty.
They weren't the lowest bidder the first time. No, we had.
My memory.
We had advanced and universal.
Yeah.
And advanced was the lowest bidder the first time around. Yeah.
Okay. Well.
Well, one, one of the things that we can place this on, on file tonight. But one of the things we have to get done, if the, if that's what the council is going to do, we have to get squared away with the gentleman that lives behind there.
Okay. Um, because it is fifteen thousand dollars less, we waited the six months to see if we could get it lower. I mean, it's still a little higher than we were hoping for, but I would recommend that we, uh, you know, put it on file at least, and then we can discuss it before final approval at the next meeting.
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion to place on file the, have it, it's not written down here. The bid from Universal Asphalt, is it actually just all bids you place on file? I'll make a motion to place all bids on file for the parking lot on East Walnut Street.
Second.
Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Ma'am, there is one other issue under Old Business. Um, so I will get into this in the Commissioner Reports a little bit, but just ahead of time, um, our comm plan. I did get reached out by one of our businesses, um, Cookie Kingdom, today that when we did the restoration of power, they did have some product lost this morning, even though they were only out of power for less than five minutes. Um, and one of the things they talked to me about is how we could better communicate instead of just putting things on Facebook. And looking at our communication hazard plan, we do have Code Red. But if you look at the reasons we use Code Red for, it's things like oil orders, water outages, and electrical outages that's planned for more than twelve hours. I don't know if this is the, the time, but we should probably have a discussion. I told them, I said, we should probably make something with the businesses that we have so that way if we know that something's going to go out and it's not necessarily an emergency situation, we can find ways to inform them, whether that's a call-out list or, or activating Code Red. I don't know how much more we want to activate Code Red for because then it starts activating everybody's phones in the region. And is that necessary or not? I don't know.
Well, can't we pick who we want those calls to go to? If we just wanted to go to our, our commercial businesses and industry, can't we put out a call to just them saying that we have an outage for five minutes, you know, tomorrow morning or whatever to reset a system?
My understanding is you draw a circle over the map and it will highlight everything.
Is that the only way to do it? That would be the best route.
That might be an option.
I usually just do it by map, so I don't know. I can look into it and see.
I think, I think that might be the answer. We can look into that and see if there's a better way to do that, and that way you're not necessarily waking up every resident.
Yeah, I don't think we need to wake up every resident. However, I think that twelve-hour outage is, is quite long. I think we should almost lower that down as well for residential customers.
Well, keep in mind, this is, this is plan one.
Well, I could tell, like I said, I could tell by the pod.
One point oh that I put together three and a half years ago, so if we want to update it, I, I don't, I think there is, we did add one thing to it. In the meantime, we added the cooling centers, I think we added, because of the worry about the load, the load that would go out. That's the only thing we added for that.
Well, we've added, we've added how we're going to shed load too, if we had.
We had shed load, but that wasn't necessarily in the comm plan. This is just how to communicate with people for non-emergency type things.
I think we can go back and take a look at how we do some of this stuff. If you've got a, a business or a commercial that, that needs to be, uh, notified, we can figure out a way to do that.
Okay.
Without, uh, without making two thousand phone calls.
Let's, uh, let's get together and see what we can find out about what we can, can't do with Code.
So let's get up.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get together, see if we can figure out what Code Red, what its capabilities are, and we can update our comm plan and, and find a better way to do that then.
Perfect.
Public comments?
Hold on. Jim's got a question.
I think they'll do that at the next meeting when we approve those ordinances. Jim, that's what I think. I mean, you can make a motion and accept the recommendations of the Plan Commission.
Do we have to have the exact write-up, though, or is, is what we have here good enough?
Correct.
Oh, in that case, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept all the recommendations from the Plan Commission from February eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Uh, Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Public comments? Please state your name for the record.
Hello, Brandy Day. Can you hear me also?
Oh, I think I, I think you turned it off.
Hello? Good evening. I am here tonight to talk about teamwork. We Are Oglesby was created by volunteers and is managed by volunteer efforts. We invest many hours of what little free time we have because we believe in Oglesby in making her a better place for our fellow citizens and visitors alike. We see the potential and the opportunities that with the right focus and energy invested, we can produce economic growth for our local businesses, increase business diversity, and bring new life to a dried-up town who is not keeping pace with the growth around her. If this sounds like something members of a city council are paid to do, you would be correct. However, we aren't seeing a boom in growth or great improvements in our city, and the lack of results can be handled in two ways. Either do nothing or create the change to make it better. I believe this is what our group was formed to do. How Cabo was previously run, I don't know. I wasn't part of it then. It is now We Are Oglesby, and we have a group of volunteers with great energy and passion for our city's betterment. I can say without a doubt that the efforts organized and planned by this group have indeed had a positive and visible effect to our city, its people, its businesses. Our hopes were to join our volunteer efforts with the city in order to do big things together. We thought we had proved ourselves very capable with the success of the Winter Parade. Only a small handful of citizens. Only a small handful of citizens put that together from scratch with zero leads or access to previous parade planning. We are not here to claim our efforts in an idea solely produced a result. What we want to be able to say is our joint efforts produced results. We have lots of inspiration and a small budget, and the city has a little inspiration and a bigger budget, so it sounded like it should work out really well. But it isn't. We've tried to look past some counterproductive antics and focus on the end result being for the better of the community. Time continues to show that we have become a source of valuable ideas, and that once the information is collected, organized, and ready to become a team effort, that the projects get taken over by the city. That does not sit well with me. I have seen the efforts and free time of our members abused by the city, and I have to address it. We have city representatives who come to our meetings and hear our ideas. They appear to want to help implement the ideas by offering assistance. We were truly looking forward to a working environment together to make these changes. It sure seemed like the team mentality was catching on, and we were quite excited about what was to come. However, it seems like, once details are formed, researched to a rolling measure, and then shared, the city's taken over the projects with no further consideration to us. Instead of the successful joint efforts all the way through a project together, we're kind of tossed to the side. If it were truly a joint venture, the city would not cut us out of the planning. You could form a committee and coordinate us, coordinate with us, like we do down at our meetings. The latest act of disregard for WAO efforts stems from a phone call and an email thread that I was forwarded. The phone call was regarding a question I had about the process for movie nights WAO is currently planning, but then it went into an email that was sent to the We Are Oglesby mailbox regarding another agenda item. It was a forward that contained emails between the city clerk, Sheetwise Printing, and the city council regarding the visitor mapping idea that has been a WAO item for several months running. For those who don't know what that is, let me share. Um, it's signs pointing out dining, pubs, shopping, other local attractions that would be placed in certain areas around town to draw visitors to our city's offerings. A You Are Here style map would be put in the public parking lot. There would be notations like it's a five-minute walk to a dining option, or a ten-minute walk to beautiful Memorial Park. It would be interactive and traceable with Q R codes linking to websites for quick access to the place of interest, and allowing us to provide our businesses with important data on clicks, website hits, and more. This data could be used to increase interest for new businesses coming to town. Many hours of our chairwoman's time, going back several months, has been dedicated to its creation in our city. Interviewing other towns, working with the city to get permission to pursue product viability, checking any ordinances or laws regarding signage so that we didn't break any rules, creating sign mockups, getting signage quotes, looking at properties around town for installation and best visualization, and creating a full and professional presentation to approach the city council with at a formal meeting to approve and solidify our efforts to move forward together. There was a process to follow, and we were doing it. In December, WAO formed the official visitor mapping committee to continue planning and grow the team, because that's a lot to ask for one person to plan. We had two people who attend the WAO meetings join, and I was really happy to see the energy and, uh, energy invested in this wonderful addition to our upper, addition to our city. We were very excited for our first formal project from creation to presentation to fruition. In my call with the city clerk, after asking me if the forwarded emails were received, there was a small discussion in which I was asked, I asked if We Are Oglesby would still be part of the map planning, to which Amy announced that the city would be taking over the mapping. It breaks my heart to say, but at the next We Are Oglesby meeting, we will dissolve the mapping committee. Whether the intent was conscious or not, it is an alarming display from our city representatives, and I certainly hope that the citizens keep that in mind in this important election coming up on year before. There is a saying that goes, when someone shows you who they are, believe them. I'll leave with this statement, a simple definition of the word teamwork from Webster's Dictionary. Work done by several associates with each doing a part, but all subordinating personal prominence to the efficiency of the whole. Thank you.
I'm a little offended by your remarks, and I'll tell you why. Uh, as far as the mapping and the, and the signage, uh, Jason and I spent some time meeting with Representative Blasnot on, on that particular item to get some help from the state, uh, from the state to get signage out there to, to better identify the businesses in Oglesby. From the Utica Four Corners to the, um, Etan Highway, uh, on I thirty-nine, and, um, three fifty-one to come in. I know we have, uh, contacted a, a number of, uh, signage companies, signage people that do this to try to get some things put together so we could, uh, make a presentation. You know, come out to see what we can get help from and where we can't, and who's gonna pay for it. You know, we've got a, we can, uh, the, we've got X amount of dollars that we can spend to help get this. So when you say that we haven't done anything, that's not quite true. I know we've had, you said the meeting in December. We've had a couple of meetings that were canceled because of the weather condition. We had one canceled at the last minute. When you start pushing these meetings back at least a week or so, so people can get together, it takes some time. I know that we have talked with, uh, the state people about getting assistance and getting some money. So I, I don't know where the disconnect came, comes from.
I never actually said you didn't do anything. I said you've taken over the project.
It's not our intent to take over the project. Uh, somebody's gotta carry the, carry the ball, and, and we've been carrying the ball to try to get it done. Apparently, we haven't done it fast enough for you.
So. So I'm a little confused a little about some of the, the comments myself, um, uh, on, on several items here. The first one is, there's three members on your, on, on the mapping committee for We Are Oglesby, right?
Yeah.
It's Andrew Partridge, myself, and my wife.
Yeah.
That's it.
Right.
So I, I don't, to me, we've just had a meeting at, at We Are Oglesby, and to my knowledge, I didn't know that the city has taken over the mapping completely. That's, this is the first I'm hearing of that. I mean, we were out there looking at stuff. It was my suggestion that I even said that, that the city could.
Just maybe asking Amy why she told me we were, that you were taking over the map.
No, what I sent you were examples and of what's been done and said, please share them, so we can get feedback. Nothing's been ordered, nothing's been paid for, there have been no payments. It's, here's what I found, please present them at your meeting. I believe is what.
My suggestion.
Why don't we form a joint committee between We Are Oglesby and the city to look into this and come back to the council with the recommendation? If they're putting the legwork in to do the, do the work, and you sit on the committee for We Are Oglesby, Jason, why don't you guys get together?
Yeah, I'm not the chair of the committee, but my recommendation was that we put together, um, like, the city could be the one that would purchase, like, the stand for everything like that, and I liked the idea that the We Are Oglesby has, they are the ones that are controlling it. As long as the map gets approved by the city, that they're updating the map, 'cause they were gonna have a, a little Q R code thing there that'd be interactive and be able to get people involved and stuff like that. I think that's great, 'cause now you're getting citizens directly. That was gonna be my recommendation, not as a council member, but to the council. So to me, I'm a little surprised that we're dissolving a committee I'm on, and I never even knew about that.
I was told by Amy, the city clerk, that the city was taking over the planning, so I don't know where that speaks of teamwork or joint work, but.
Do we have that conversation?
Well, I'm the mayor, and I didn't know that.
I didn't know that either. I, I forwarded the examples and sign.
Brandy, I, I don't think, I think there's, there's miscommunication here and something lost in interpretation. I, all we can, all we can do is going forward, do a better job of working together, communicating better, and you know that I'm a supporter of yours, and I think this is a simple fix. I'm sorry for.
I am too. I attend the meetings.
The mistake, but.
I agree with you. I think it is a simple.
I do too.
I think all she's asking for is for us to be, to have some effort and work together.
But nobody's excluded you.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm happy to always.
There's nobody excluded you.
But I feel like I do.
I know Jason was on that, that committee.
You were surprising me so much, Amy, that I actually wrote them down. So we are taking over the planning. I don't know what is not clear about that, so pardon my confusion, I suppose.
Well, I'm not, if I would say that, I, I don't know that I would share it and ask you to present it if I'm not able to attend a meeting, to listen to everybody's ideas, to see how we can come together. I've sent out emails to the.
If you wanna backtrack this, it's fine.
All, all we, all we need to do is.
Go backwards. I wanna keep moving forward with the committee.
I, I think we're, I think we're getting off the beaten track.
Yeah, let's, 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 let's not make the same mistake twice. Let's work together moving forward and work for the betterment of the city.
And I, I think your first part of your comments were right on spot, where you have a lot of inspiration from, from people, uh, from the citizens that wanna be involved, and then you have the city that has other financial resources and opportu, like, for example, like, we had access to, you know, our state representative to talk about the signage and things like that that we can get going. You know, that would be something that, that We Are Oglesby wouldn't have access to. The other thing I thought, for example, I wrote down, was the initial idea of the window wraps for a bit. I think that is a, a brilliant idea. Obviously, you guys don't have the financing to be able to put something like together, and I think that is a fantastic thing for us to be able to use different accounts for, to do stuff like that. And that's why, my understanding is, we're looking into stuff like that. So.
I've shared.
So I'm a little confused by some of the, because a lot of the stuff you said in the beginning, I absolutely a hundred percent, and to my now, again, I was just at a meeting two weeks ago.
I guess I'll report the conversation on the phone next time.
But what I'm saying is, our last committee meeting, our last meeting that we had with We Are Oglesby, I didn't know that we were getting dissolved.
Well.
And I'm one-third of the committee.
Officers and go over the information that was presented similar to how you guys read yours.
Well, Amy, Amy.
Um, if you want to wait for me to present this at our next meeting, so I can get our officers and members' intake on moving forward or not, that's fine. I'll present it at the next meeting and go from there.
Uh, let me, let me say something. You know, one of the reasons we went to Letnok, because, and, and I know Amy got a call in a day or so later, is that there is some ways that maybe we can get some state assistance for this. And if I can, can get money out of the state, I wanna do that.
These are great committee ideas. This is probably the place to have the discussion regarding all of the signage, which is why we have our committee forum. But again, moving on, we have discussed it. Our plan was to dissolve the committee, so I will go back to our group. We Are Oglesby, we can discuss, discuss it at our next meeting, and then reach out to you guys with how that goes. That's the best I can offer right now.
Did I miss that at the last We Are Oglesby meeting, that you guys were gonna dissolve that committee?
No, this came about after that.
Okay, I just, 'cause I didn't remember hearing that, or else I wouldn't have trusted.
Who voted to, to dissolve the committee?
Did have a dis.
Right. It's an officers' meeting. And then at our next meeting, we'll make the motions, but it will be presented at our next meeting to dissolve it.
You're not willing to reconsider, Brandy?
I have to go before my people. I, I feel that's fair. We all had our input on this discussion tonight. I had the backing of my officers to be here. So I'll go back to them and see, but it's, a lot of time and effort has been put into several projects, and you feel like once it gets to that point, it's just kinda swiped off the table, and we're not needed anymore. And we're here to make an impact together, not just be amused or some legwork for you guys.
I don't look at you that way at all. I don't either, not at all.
I can't, I don't agree with you. And principally, I thought you guys did a great job with the, uh, with the parade and the band. I know how some of that got done. Nobody asked, the city didn't try to take that over. There were people that stepped to the plate and said, here, I can help you out. And, uh, and helped them make it happen, and they did. So I'm a little bit, a little bit blindsided by what you're saying. Uh, commissioners' reports.
I just wanna update the council mayor on something that just came to light. We've been out of compliance with a state statute. It's, I, I put it in your packets, and Pat, I don't know if you see it there. It's about two percent foreign fire insurance tax on board. And what this is, just to explain it, if, if one of our, our industries or commercial, uh, properties are insured from out of state, if, if that insurance company isn't, I don't know, there's a word for it. If, if it's out-of-state insured, then two percent of the fire protection tax has to go into this fund, and that's how this money comes to be. Um, by state statute, it has to be made, the board has to be made up of sworn firefighters, uh, from the membership. The fire chief is automatically on the board, and then six members of the fire department are elected by the whole to serve on this board. They are, um, bound by the Opens Meeting Act, have to, uh, place agendas, all that kinda stuff, and they vote on how to use the money. To put into perspective, last year, I believe you brought in somewhere in the area of ten thousand dollars. Historically, with the city of Oglesby, they have put the money directly into the general fund, which is not in line with the statute. So we're in the process now of getting a separate bank account for this money. We are in the process of, um, forming this board from the fire department, and going forward, we're looking to be compliant with the statute, so I just wanted to make the council aware of that.
I think maybe you, you mean to tell me if, if they're from out of state?
If, if, if the insurance company is, let's say G T I uses an insurance, like Cincinnati Insurance, they're a big one. Uh, what happens is, two percent of the premium that's, that they pay for fire protection is, that's how this, this money comes to be. The city gets a check once a year from the municipal league, right now. And, um, that check, like I said, needs to be put into a separate account so that we, we can track how it's spent. It's gotta be used for the betterment of the fire department. That's the only way that those monies can be spent. Like I said, historically, we don't have any tracking of how this money's been spent.
But an in-state company, is this an additional two percent?
We don't get anything if the insurance company originate, is accredited in Illinois, or whatever the, the correct term is. If, like I said, if the insurance company is audacity from, let's say, Michigan, or Ohio, or California, or Florida, whatever, then that's when, that's what funds this, this, um, tax.
It looks like it says that it's elected by the members of the department.
That's correct. That's what I said.
And it says they may establish a fund. It doesn't say they have to, I don't think, Terry, but I'll read this a little further.
That's my understanding of, of how it's supposed to be done. I, I have some, some history with this, and I know how it was done with other fire departments, and I know that's aligned with what all of them do. Um, I don't know how the city can honestly say that that money's being spent for the betterment of the department if we're not tracking it at all.
It probably just goes into the general fund.
It does, right now.
The, the general fund of the city.
But we don't even have a separate line item to show.
Yeah.
How it's being spent.
That should be something that should be at least easily able to be done, is a separate line item for it. I know when we do our appropriations budgets and our expenditures every year, there's all kinds of items across that. At least being able to track how much is coming in and being spent for it would be good.
Yeah, I don't know. We'll, we'll let Pat read into it. I just wanted to make the council aware that I, I think we might be out of compliance with it.
Yeah, it looks like you're supposed to establish the board, but you don't have to establish the account, but I'll read it a little further.
Fair enough.
And it's a department thing. It's not a city thing. It's the department that has to create.
And, and they are, they are doing that right now, Pat. Their first meeting in March, they are establishing this board, and it will be formed after that.
Okay. Let me read this, Terry, and then we'll communicate a little more.
Yeah, I just wanted to make you aware so that we could look into it and figure out how to.
Okay, thank you.
Go forward.
Mr. Curran.
I have several things. Obviously, the electrical thing. Uh, let me go over some of the smaller items, and I'll, I'll read what I have prepared for the electrical stuff. The first thing is, finally have some good news. Three and a half years running, and we finally got all of our final paperwork for the hydrant grant. There is some requirements. There is some requirements we have to do. We have to be able to go out for bid for it, so not everything's ready tonight yet. I wanna make sure that we go through all the process properly because I wanna maximize every ounce of that $135,000 we have coming to us. That's the first thing. Second thing, Oakwood and Heritage Drain Tile. The easement is completed. Just gotta wait for the recording of it to have happened. I talked with my street department superintendent today, and he is gonna be getting with Pohar. We already got the quote and everything, and we're gonna be scheduling a start date as soon as I find out with the start date for that drainage thing that's gonna solve. It's been an ongoing thing for years. So hopefully I'll get started soon. And the last thing is, I shouldn't say the last thing. Second to last thing is refreshing the road lines. This has been a topic that's come up for a little bit. My guys are trying to get more quotes. For whatever reason, it's not done as often in this area, so, or at least they don't wanna work on small communities. We've only got one quote, and because it's something that hasn't been done before in the city, at least anything we have records of, I really wanna be able to get more quotes to be able to get a good comparison to spend taxpayer dollars, so waiting on that yet. Okay, the electrical outage. Let's see what I got here. Once a year, and in early March last year, we have a company come in to do our maintenance and checks on our substations. Those checks include many items such as checking oil, temperatures of all switches and contacts, and for many other irregularities. When the power went out Wednesday, we were about three weeks away from our standard yearly maintenance check. The culprit that caused the issue was a 1,200 amp contact switch on top of the transformer above the main breaker. When the power went out for a large section of the city on Wednesday, electrical department arrived on the scene to try to figure out where the fault was. This was a difficult item to troubleshoot since power was available at many locations in our system, but there wasn't a readily identifiable reason why the main breaker would not reengage. Our electric department attempted to reset the entire system to get the breaker to reengage. It did not work. That is why residents heard the loud bang. After some more troubleshooting and unable to pinpoint the problem, city workers moved over all available circuits to the other transformer. This did bring the lights back on, but brought back the flicker, brought back the flickering lights issue that the city had for years before that was permanently rectified almost three years ago. If the option was to keep the lights off or have some flickering lights, we chose the latter. On the upcoming days, the transformer was able to be taken apart a bit more, and this contact switch was discovered to be at fault. Parts were already on hand, and the problem parts were replaced by Monday. However, residents and businesses were still on the temporary move circuits and experiencing the flickering lights. I was able to inform the mayor of the status, and the question was, when should we do the switch back? We decided it would be better to be done sooner than later, and we scheduled yesterday that we will do the switch over at 4:00 AM in the morning to have the least impact to residents and businesses. Going forward, we are improving our preventive maintenance plan. We are now in the process of ordering one of those infrared temperature checking devices. I have implemented a new set of procedures that we will not only continue and do the yearly maintenance, but we will also be performing and recording temperature checks at least quarterly on all critical contacts in the substations. This should allow for us to identify problems sooner to prevent component failure in the future. Any questions on that? I tried to, there's, there's a lot more to it in the troubleshooting efforts that they took.
I got a question, Jason.
Yes.
So when you, when, last week, when you tried to...
Come on, come on. Identify yourself, and I'll...
Derek Costello.
Okay.
When your supervisor, whatever, tried to re-energize the entire town at one time in that big bang...
Yep.
Which is, I've been doing my work for 17 years, thanks to this man right here. The biggest fireball I've ever seen in my entire life. Did that ruin any of the connects or contacts or switches or anything in that sub? Not one time, but two?
The second, the first time was an air break.
It's not just a bang. It's, it's a fireball about the size of a vehicle, and it's extremely warm, and it melts things, like the connections and the contacts of those switches. So if those switches are good now, how long are they gonna last before we have the same, same thing that happened the other night?
As I said, we have yearly maintenance that happens to come into effect.
That switch, that switch, that switch is probably, I'd say, 60 years old.
That, that switch that went bad has been replaced. Was when, when he, when he closed it in and went to ground.
Which time, Dom?
Pardon?
Which time? He did it twice. I watched it. Straight to ground. Straight to ground.
The first one was not the same. The first one was an air break that was trying to be opened.
It had no snuffers on it. I'm just saying that.
Yeah, I, wait.
I, I, you're getting above me on that one.
Part of that, when the second feed comes in, it's gonna be that...
This is 12 KP.
That system, that system that, that comes in there is antiquated to, is a polite way of saying it. And that's gonna be replaced so we don't have some of those problems. We have, we have a breaker that is not working properly.
At the sub, at the little one, right? Yep.
It's, it's not working properly. It'll be replaced.
How about the switches that he basically burnt out?
They'll, they'll be replaced. Some of them have been replaced already. The one that I've seen is up there, and I don't know which...
Were they replaced this week?
Pardon?
Were they replaced this week or...
So you have a lot, you have a lot of deep...
Fire this? I, I watched, I watched with my own eyes, and another man with me that you know very well. I'm telling you, the bigger, I, you know how hot that stuff is. It burns contacts, it burns everything.
I know.
So are we just gonna sit, let it sit there and maybe wait till the next time?
No.
It goes bad?
I just told you.
Kinda like, kinda like the underground, kinda like the underground in my neighborhood that went bad four years ago? That was, that was a loop-fed system?
You're getting a little aggressive, and I don't know.
I know, but it's been four years.
Can I ask you, can I ask you a question?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait, just, wait a minute, let me talk.
I'm sorry.
You know, you talk about switching. I know how to switch. I did that for a number of years.
A hundred percent.
I went, and every substation's a little bit different. You know, it's easy to come back and say, oh, they should've been to did this or they should've did that first. I tell you, you're the man out there making the decisions.
You don't open a switch or close a switch under load.
Can I ask you, you made a comment. What are you talking about four years ago? What underground are you referring to? There's one underground I know. That was not four years ago.
Uh, it's coming up on four years, June, it was June of 2019.
It's over, it's over four years ago. Part of the problem is, in fact, that job was supposed to be started this fall. We didn't have the material. It's slated to be started this spring.
In March.
So, you know, that isn't...
I've explained in...
Dom, I spend countless thousand dollars on taxes in that neighborhood. And, and how many other neighborhoods in this city that were supposed to be loop-fed or no longer loop-fed, now they're all radio? So if, if I, if I, if I have an Arbor outage, if there's a transformer bad on Arbor, now everyone, everyone from Trump all the way around, no power because the underground's been bad for four years. It's 1,700 feet of number two wire.
That is incorrect. I, I, one of the things that frustrates me is when people make statements that's not true. When I got...
Derek, we've got, we've had, we've gone back. That job was supposed, was bad and let...
Supposed to be, but why hasn't ever been done? It is easy to...
Because we didn't get the material.
May I...
You don't have the material, you don't have the money, but the money that we're...
No, no, no.
Everybody calm down.
May I explain?
It's getting way too heated in here.
Derek, Derek, the money, the, the job was awarded, the contractor, we didn't have the wire.
It's number two wire underground.
May I explain?
We didn't have it.
I'd like to correct...
How can I do it?
I would like to have the opportunity to correct you of where you are wrong.
I understand. I understand.
I could do that with three guys.
If you don't have the wire, how do you do the job?
How do you not get the wire? We're buying.
The contractor contacted us, he can't get to it. JF.
JF was just in there this, three weeks ago.
We had the contract approved well over a year, year and a half ago? They don't have the materials yet. What do you, what am I gonna do, force them to get the material? And your statement...
Dom, please understand, you don't know, I understand this, though. It's just ridiculous. It's ridiculous, Dom.
Derek, I, I understand that you're frustrated about some things.
I wouldn't be as frustrated as what happened earlier on Christmas Eve from your men.
You got the transformers changed.
Yeah, but what did I call you and tell you?
We got it changed.
Where was your man at? Where was your man at? Where was your top man at? At that, at that date, when I have a 92-year-old neighbor by herself on the coldest day of the goddamn year?
I don't understand your question.
My, my question is, not even a question...
I had a qualified lineman and a second person there.
We got, we got three people, we got three people in our electric department. We, we didn't, in fact, the gentleman, another guy came in, and he had been out shopping with his wife. He came back to Oglesby to get the work to change the transformer.
I'm just, I'm gonna bite my tongue because I know what you don't want me to say.
Okay, we'll talk another, we'll talk another day.
But the infrastructure of this electrical in this city, the amount of money we pay in taxes and electrical bills, why is it not up kept?
I think you are so confused on how...
No, I am not confused, Jason.
You are. You are.
Jason, I am not confused. I can drive around this entire city and tell you what is wrong with it. Because what are you guys doing? Do they do maintenance? Is there any maintenance in this town?
Yes, there is.
Yes.
When? Between the, between the Christmas lights and the flags? It's pathetic? It's pathetic?
I just love it when people complain that something...
Derek, that's enough.
You know, I, I'm not gonna get yelled at. All right.
Maybe four years from now, we'll get that underground...
Enough.
The underground, let me correct a couple of things. That gentleman said that's not true.
And go put another fist, fist ball court in down there. Maybe take your money there.
First thing is, the electrical underground is, there's been, there's three legs in the underground that was put in, in the 70s back in Clark Street, the Clark Street area. About 15 years ago, they found out that one of the legs was bad. I was informed about that when I, when I got in office here. And I said, okay, let's start, so we still have two legs? Yes, there's still a second leg. Great. Okay, let's start looking at a plan together of how we're gonna get that. It's gonna cost about a hundred grand. Okay, so we start looking at options for that, and I, this has all been explained in the past. And then about two years, two years ago or so, that's when someone hit, dug a fence and blew up one of the legs. And I said, hey, let's, we need to activate the backup leg. And they went to go look at it. The leg that they thought was good for 15 years was not. It was dead. So they repaired the, the one to get the power back on for everybody, and that upped the priority level. At that point, that's when we went out for, for bid, for the problem to be solved, and the problem came in at like $290,000 for the quote. We accepted the quote, we placed it on file, we approved it. And then when they come to do the work, they didn't have the materials. So I don't know what that gentleman's talking about. I mean, we've been trying to get this job done for a while, and it's looking to finally start in March. What was the next thing you said that wasn't correct? Oh, I, I love it when, you know, the problem is, same thing with the water and sewer that we have in the town. When you have a town that's this old, it's an incredible amount.